Okay, and our first real item is the oath of office for our new library board trustee, Lucille Renwick. So we need to go over here. We're gonna need to make sure that it's.
Sometimes trustees gather.
You'll decide what's.
Sure. Okay, as the photographer, do you have any directions on how we. Because we can, social media will proclaim and, you know, announce. We're supposed to wear masks, but we, you know, I think we have to avoid people. I thought you, I knew my book was.
I mean, I thought it was, you don't want to get. So Lucille.
Is this, are we all done? Do you, is this good after?
Yeah, this is fine. I'm getting in on video too.
Okay, I, Lucille, have my.
I'm Lucille.
whose solemn swear.
whose solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of Board of Library Trustees.
Board of Library Trustees.
For a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
For a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
And you were Sheldon York.
I'm Sheldon York.
According to the best of my colleagues. Was it? You're in.
So now we get the signatures and Chris will.
You wanna take, okay.
Maybe she's doing now so that I can't forget.
Let's do that now.
I like you with the emphasis.
Here.
If you call in any person, they'll be very excited. How's it going, okay?
First, um, I'm here. It was great. We loved it.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
I thought that, how can you go all the way?
I am. Yep, then we did flop down.
Can you go to HCL and do that?
I'm sorry about that. So I wanted to hear, but it's a test right now. I think I'm gonna let me, so next week. It is a beauty. I wanna bring my son, he's never been.
Oh, well, that's important. I, I have deep regrets here, but I wanna go over there and just, a program.
I did call one day because I was interested in Archer and his program, and they had said they could move it inside.
Was it the weather because it was so sunny?
The weather, yeah, so I was just curious if we were moving outside or if they could move it inside.
They can't, we haven't decided that in the circumstances where the weather is spreading. But that will be moved inside, but we're always, always trying to, we don't want it to not be. Thankfully, these programs, you know, when, you know, just because of the weather. We actually have a presentation. Here.
Here we are.
That's up and did a program and I'm going.
It's been lovely to see you all. Thank you for this opportunity to serve. Thank you, Chris.
Kind of a show must go on.
Yeah. This is a good atmosphere.
Good to see.
Good night, all.
Okay, good night.
Thank you.
Chris, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Approval of minutes. Did anyone get a chance to read the minutes there behind your agenda in your packet that you haven't looked yet? Please take a look. I looked already.
Francis has a comment.
Yep.
No, it's an observation, really. I've noted here as absent, something I normally don't want to do.
It was, it was a technology.
Yeah, but we had, yeah, we had a technical hitch and it was difficult to try to get onto Zoom and so on, so I tried and tried.
No, it was our fault. We had.
We had a hard time.
You know, it was some strange thing with the license.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Was renewed, but I just, it was the first time that it ever happened, and of course it was a board meeting.
So it was my intention to be present, in other words.
And I don't need to make a big deal out of this.
No, no, no.
Oh, yeah, so, but, so, and my only comment is that I think the chair names are not up to date on here because I think Cory.
Or June?
Yes, because Cory was the, is the special, was, was the special projects committee chair at the time.
So it would be just Whitney Barrett?
It would just be, yes, exactly.
So I can't change that?
Yep, and then Cory, I don't think, yeah, same, yeah, he's not, I don't think he was.
This, well, the last Chuck was chair.
Yeah.
What were you chair for?
Policy.
Policy, right, you know, special project.
Correct.
So we're switching now?
Well, now we have new things, but this is just for the last time, and yeah, so just take out the chair.
Take out chair.
Cory as well, yeah.
Yeah, amended. Anything else?
And I don't, I think that's it. And it's not really that important, but.
Well, it's after.
It's just, it is after. Good, um, can we?
Can we move on to executive session?
Yes, um, can we, do we prove the minutes first? Do we do that first? Okay, um, can I move to approve the minutes? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Then the minutes have been approved. Um, we now need approval from the board to move into executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Um, can I, can I get a second for that?
A second.
Okay.
Lucille.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And at what time was that?
7:41. And I see Daniel is texting, he's walking in. Good, just in time. So we will be, um, we will be moving into executive session now.
Go into the bathroom.
Great.
So we basically leave everything there.
Yeah, that's, Jean, you turn, please. Not in, it's a legal slide, not a personal one.
Can I eavesdrop?
Hey. We're back.
We need to have a motion.
Yes, we are back. Um, can I, I am making a motion to resume, to end the executive session and resume public session. Can I get a second?
Second.
Call that, Sarah, Lucille. Cory, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes, we are now back in public session. Um, and with that, following our discussion, um, I will make the following statement that with the understanding that we will continue to receive documentation in support of the following request. We are now requesting the board to approve a sick leave extension up to the limits as dictated in the current union contract for employee number eight L H zero 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 one two five. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes, um, the board approves the request. Thank you, everybody. Good, so we're here at regular business now. Um, WLS report, Frances.
Okay, thank you. Let me begin by most pleasant duty on my part to wish you well as you assume the presidency of our, our board, and I pledge to work closely with you.
Thank you, Frances.
As I represent you.
Likewise, I look forward to working with you.
And the same goes to Lucille, and congratulations, winning the elections, which is always a tough thing, they say. And I just want to wish you well as you take up your assignment in this board. Um, I have very few things to, to say. One is that following the considerable relaxation of guidelines for the pandemic, um, nearly all of our 38 libraries are pretty much back to normal. Uh, some more than others. Our library, of course, has been very progressive in this, and that is one, the, the approval of, of the board. But there are other libraries that are a little more cautious because the boards like to go very slowly and so on, so. But on the whole, our libraries, 38 of them within the data county are pretty much back to normal. The second thing that the, the board, WLS board, has been busy with in the past two, three months has been the discussion on the service level agreement. Service level agreement is an agreement that governs the, uh, the flow of services that WLS provides to the 38 libraries in, in the technical, in the information technology field. The, the current agreement is, is pretty much expiring, so the discussion has been going on, uh, within the library directors and also in the different, uh, subcommittees set up to, to discuss this, and also within our own board, um, on the next service agreement. The, um, as I said, the service agreement details the kind of services that WLS provides to the different libraries, uh, in, in pretty considerable details, including the cost and how they're billed, invoices and so forth. Um, the non-technical descriptive part of that agreement has pretty much been finalized and has been forwarded to lawyers to look at it and put all kinds of legal, legalese in it, and then we'll come back to the board and then, uh, once it is approved, I'm going to be circulating it to, to our board as well. A key element, sorry, a key element in the, in LSA is the, rather sticky point. The, um, the model, the finance model that will govern the, uh, the billing of the services that the WLS provides. Um, this is quite an intricate, as the director would tell you. Um, this model has to be equitable, has to be balanced, take into account the resources of each library, uh, the different tendencies of the libraries, um, and, and their own needs, et cetera. Um, and, and so that discussion has, has been going on for, for, for quite a while now. But right now, there, there appears to be two options, two model financial options that, that are being considered. Option A and option B. Option B sort of sticks closely to the current arrangement. Um, and model A is more innovative. Um, and I just, I just leave it at that. And our director's been very, very much involved in, in discussing these, these models. Um, because the directors and, and also our board, which has not yet considered it anyway, could not agree on which model to, to use. It has been decided that let the current model go on for, for a while until the end of the year, while the directors work on, on, on the new model that's acceptable. So it is hoped that a choice will be made between either model A or B or some kind of merger, between the two. So, uh, that, that's one. The other thing which is fairly dear to me is, um, with this pandemic, there's been a lot of, uh, stress in the community. Uh, mental stress, psychological stress, uh, people who have lost relatives, uh, jobs and so on, you know, you know, it all, there's been a lot of problems for, for, for many people, particularly the seniors, the elderly and, and others. And hopefully, uh, New York Project Hope is, is a project that has been designed to try to provide counseling, uh, to anyone within, within the country who may need it, particularly the elderly, um, in terms of insurance, in terms of their, uh, what, what the, the, the country can provide for them, et cetera. Um, and some of the services are located in libraries, and our libraries have been participating in it, Yonkers, and I think also our New York City libraries and others. And they provide counseling to anyone who wants it. Counseling can be done either on Zoom or it can be done in person now that we are offering up, and I think our library has been quite, quite active in that. So this kind of servicing, this assistance to the community, however small, has been ongoing and I've been supporting it. I think it, it addresses some of the concerns, the basic concerns of our, of our community. So that is Project Hope. Uh, the third thing is, I think I told you that, uh, the board is, is in the process of reviewing the mandate and the vision of, of our libraries in, in the country. What is the, what should be the function of our libraries? What should be their mission? What should be their role? And how can we ensure that with the changing environment, that our libraries are adapting to these changes and are capable of providing the right kind of services that our people need? Because the libraries exist because of the services that they provide to the people. And the more people need the services, the more libraries are justified. And so a, a subcommittee or a committee has been set up to look into this. It's called Strategy Committee, and it'd be nice to chair that. So we, we had three or four meetings, fairly intense discussions on this, and we have come out, um, with a fairly comprehensive review of the vision statement and the mission statement for our libraries. We've submitted that to, to the board to consider, and they haven't reacted yet. Um, and when we resume our meetings again in September, we're going to go into some other aspects of, of this, of the strategy. Uh, so that, that's fairly an interesting thing. It is, is forward-looking, um, and I think it will help us, um, have a broader horizon outside of what we're doing, um, in order to see what adjustments we need to make in our, in our organization and so that we can deliver a better service to, to the patrons. So that is ongoing. The last one, and, and I see that has been included in the folder that you have, um, there's going to be a series of training sessions for trustees. Trustees, not only WLS trustees, but yourselves as well, library trustees. Um, three, yeah, three trainings in, in October and November and December on the duties and responsibilities of trustees, uh, library board meetings, how to conduct them, personnel, et cetera. Very, very interesting. I've attended some of the, uh, some of the trainings in, in other, yeah, at a lower level, but they're quite, quite interesting and quite, quite informative. So, uh, you are being requested to look seriously into taking part in, in this, in this training.
I have a question about that. It says they're being recorded. If you don't make a, a line.
Yeah, exactly, if you can't make it.
The resources.
You can, you can always have the recording.
Good.
But, you know, recording is not as good as.
No, it's not, it's not, but in the event that, you know, you can't tell right now, yeah, good.
So that does just for information, and glad that the directors has already provided information on that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Good, thank you, Frances. Good, um, uh, President's Report, that is me. So this was my first time giving President's Report. I will keep it very brief. Um, we're gonna be talking about a few things, um, as we move through our committee reports, and, um, one thing I will say is that we have new committee assignments, so everyone should have that available. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to kind of remind everybody what those are. Um, but I can very briefly just say, um, we have seven committees, the Budget and Finance Committee. Thank you. Policy, oh, you printed it. Community Relations, Special Projects, Buildings and Grounds, Personnel, and then Finance, Treasury and Audit. That's a single committee. Um, I haven't heard any opposition to this format so far, so please do tell me if you've looked at it and you, and you have objections, but Chuck Burke will be the chair this year of the Budget and Finance Committee. Beth Acicella will be chair of the Policy Committee. Daniel Bonet will be, am I saying your name right? I think all this time, I thought I was, good. Um, Chair of the Community Relations Committee, Whitney Barrett, that's me, will be Special Projects Committee Chair. Buildings and Grounds will be Sarah Langwa. Personnel Committee Chair will be Lucille Renwick, and the Finance, Treasury and Audit Committee Chair will be Cory Galloway. So congratulations on your chair appointments, and thank you. Um, we'll talk more about our strategic planning process and give updates on that, and that's it for me for now, and I will pass it on to Tom for the Director's Report.
Thank you, Whitney, and, um, welcome as a board president.
Thank you.
For to a productive year.
Me too.
Um, in, in terms of our current situation, I'll just report on library operations, and I'm happy to say, as Frances observed earlier, our library is back functioning. Um, we're back to the hours pre-pandemic, except for Monday nights, which we will restore in September, but we are moving forward. It's certainly been a strange time, these, these last 18 months, but I'm proud of how our library staff and our board, frankly, functioned in this very challenging time, and we continue to stay in, um, touch with our patrons and had to stretch and bend and learn new things in order to continue to provide the services that our community has grown to expect. But we are moving back to in-person and open, and as you folks know, all entrances are open, our hours are back. Um, we're returning furniture to their original spots and, um, adding slowly, but we're adding more furniture as, as, as we go forward. We have, um, technology that is back in place so that if people need to use a computer, a printer, a scanner, a fax machine, it's all, it's all there for them now. And as I indicated, we are slowly adding more online as we go forward. Um, you know, this is the summertime, and traditionally, our summers have been incredibly busy with the building literally rocking because we've had so much. We're not quite there yet with, with that. We have elected, as you folks know, to have our programs outside, um, at Main, in the, in the tent, in the children's garden, um, outside at HCL in the back patio space, and that's working out very well. Um, you know, we are seeing more and more people participate in the programs for children, and we are seeing more and more people in the building. It's interesting, last week, we sort of noticed a bump, and there are more people in the building, there are people using the collections, they're studying, they're using our meeting rooms, um, they're using the study rooms. So it's reassuring because it was a little unnerving for us to see it so quiet, you know, after having been closed, but we can see, um, you know, the activity levels are growing more robust. Um, let's see, our theater and meeting rooms are being made available. We still have some limitations, and of course, one of the major limitations, we are still insisting on our masks. Um, we're gonna evaluate that for September and see if we can let that go at that point in time. I'm hopeful that we can. We are making the presumption that we will be back to programming for all ages in the building in September, pending, um, some sort of, you know, step back in regards to our situation with COVID-19. But that's our anticipation, and we're already starting the process of getting, getting prepared for that, and that's really reassuring, to be perfectly honest with you. Um, and in terms of operations, I'd be negligent if I didn't mention that we had a flood this last Thursday, right around the same time, and it was really unfortunate. Um, it was a bathroom, children's bathroom malfunctioned. It was because a patron apparently chose to use her foot, and she was allowed to use the, the children's restroom because our restrooms were being cleaned. Um, she used her foot to, uh, on the plexometer versus her hand, and as a result, we had this flood, it was really, it was something. Uh, but, you know, I have to say, our two custodians, um, Rob Florin and Ella Troy, Daniel O'Gerry, our IT head, and myself, we stayed, we stayed, we bailed, we took books off the shelves, we moved the shelving units in the area where the flood occurred, and it was probably about two fifths of the, of the children's area. And so, so we did that, and the great news was what was impacted was the carpet and, and the inconvenience for the public and the staff, but the collection is entirely intact, which is something that's really hard to replace. The technology is fine, there isn't a lot of furniture there, and that, that was fine too. So, um, and again, you know, we did all of that, we stayed till after 10 o'clock, we had our cleaning service in, they came and sent more people with extraction unit, blowers, and our goal was to save this carpet because, folks, you know, it's less than two months old, which is really frustrating. But what we've discovered after getting it dry, that the color, the carpet is discolored and there's starting to be some lift, you know, and so we made the determination to replace that carpet. And the irony is that the carpet vendor had over-ordered carpet, so, and so we have it, um, we have enough carpet to, um, he was, we had told him to take it back, and he was ready to do so, but he didn't. And so we have enough carpet on hand to repatriate that space. We have to pay for it because, you know, we had gotten a discount from the original purchase of the carpet, but that's, that's fine.
What happened to the labor?
What's that?
What happened to the labor?
Um, we're gonna pay for the labor because.
We had the materials.
We had the attic stock for.
We had the attic stock, and we had the extra. And so, so, and as a matter of fact, we, we've started the process to replace the carpet. It will begin on Monday, it should hopefully be done, not Monday, Tuesday. Um, our custodians are really endlessly inventive in how to do this. We don't want to use movers, we don't want to spend the money, so they've come up with a scenario where we can, um, move the bookshelves. We purchased some dollies, and so we're gonna move the bookshelves. Our four pages are going to re, um, reorganize all the books that were in all kinds of, you know, non-order. Um, and so we're hoping to get this, we're, I don't want to be optimistic, but it's, it's entirely possible we may see the, the room entirely open in two weeks' time from today. That's our goal. I'm not sure if we can make it happen, but getting the carpet down, which will happen very soon, it will be in a, in a good place. And I really have to commend those three gentlemen that I mentioned. They were there.
Good, thank you.
And they were bailing.
Thanks, Sam, for much.
Yeah, so, so that's that, um, just, just some grants, you know, fortunately, we've been able to close, or in the process of closing, two grants at the Ugonna Children's Library, New York State Construction Grants, that's great. Jean is working towards that, there's a lot of paperwork involved there. We still have, uh, the first grant for the second floor renovation, we're nearly done, we're reaching a point where we can close that. The second grant, Phase Two, for the second floor renovation, we're not, we're not there yet. Because of the pandemic, what we discovered was that furniture was on back order, and we're also discovering prices, we're really seeing the cost of prices going up precipitously, which was something that was, we hadn't occurred, hadn't occurred before. The circulation project, the gateway project, we had money left. I mean, so we, we used it to purchase components that we hadn't thought we could use, but this, this pandemic has really scrambled our budget. We may be coming to you with a request to use some fund balance monies to, to make that good, but we're, we're not quite there yet. Um, let's see what else. And we're also working on grants that we will probably come to you in August. I don't have all of the specifics sketched out, but per, at the main library, it would be, um, the redo of the third floor, and it would be similar to what we've done on the second floor, in which we'll take care of the aesthetics, the carpet and the paint. We will be, um, creating a new information desk, similar to one that's on the second floor. Uh, we will be purchasing some new tables. We will be purchasing some new tables and chairs. One thing that we've discovered is that our community wants to use the library, but they want to use it in a variety of ways. So we are creating more study rooms and smaller meeting rooms so that we can have a place for people to come and meet, hold sessions, et cetera. So that will be one aspect. As we've done before, we'll have a laptop bar overlooking the courtyard, so that will be nice. Some new shelving and panels on some of the stack areas so we can continue to sign so that people know where they need to go. Probably the Bliss Music Center. The furniture in that space has been, it has been heavily used for over 12 years. Yeah. And so, we're going to replace that with new furniture as well. And we think we have a really good shot at getting a sizable grant, as we've had in previous years. Fortunately, the New York State Construction Grant budget line was bumped up again. And so, what, this, the year that just finished, the whole county had only access to about $650,000. This year, the grant that we're going for, the money has doubled. It's over $1.2 million. And as you folks know, we are the most successful library in the county the last 15 years for grant money, nearly $2 million, twice the previous, the next. Not to be too competitive, but, you know, it's money there. It's why not New Rochelle? Why not improve our facility? And, and so, we're going to do that. The other grant that we're looking at is at the Huguenot Children's Library. We're allowed to apply for grants in both buildings. And it's a project that Sarah was involved in, and we'll probably ask her for her input, too. And that is for an improvement in the patio area, because, again, it's a, it's a popular area. We'd like to make it more attractive. We'd like to create an environment that's more pleasant and conducive. The patio is used quite heavily, extensively during the summer months. And we had made some improvements. We, we had gotten a grant money for an awning and other things, but we think there are more things to be done. We are working with the folks that we have spoken to before, Doug Emilio and the gentleman landscape architect. We're waiting for a proposal back to see what that might mean. I thought we'd get it sooner, but Doug just has been, just busy. He's on vacation. He promised me we'll get it early next week. And so, those are the, those are the grants that we are looking towards. And we'll have more to share with you folks, you know, going forward. Just some other quick things. We're still working on our Wi-Fi hotspot and device grant programs. It's funny, where we have money from the foundation so that we could purchase Wi-Fi hotspots and devices to loan to people who do not have access, you know, because of, you know, the obvious digital divide that exists here. We can also, we're working with the City of New Rochelle for some CARES money as well, so we can do that. And we also have the opportunity for some E-Rate monies. So we have a variety of areas. And I have to say, Daniel O'Gerry, who's always really steps up, is sort of along with some help, but really is juggling the balls of how we can manage that. And so, hopefully, I'll have more to share with you and the...
Have they contacted you, the district?
The district, I have not heard from them.
Even after they've contacted...
No. Maybe I should. Do you have a phone number of somebody I could talk to?
Oh, really?
Yeah, because it's just, you know, the foundation last year had loaned out 40 Wi-Fi devices when the school district was struggling to make sure that every child had the ability to receive an education. And the person that we dealt with was great, but I guess he was a consultant. It's no longer with the school district. So we've sort of lost the thread of who we, who was our contact. So, but Daniel, thank you for sending me that. Let's see what else. Just as an interesting, and I'll try to make it quick. I'm going on AARP. You know, that's our most popular program, period, where we provide, we as a sponsor with AARP, provide tax support with tax preparation for well over 1,000 people, year in, year out. And of course, last year, because of the pandemic, the National AARP chose not to do anything live, but to do remote. And so, we worked with this amazing group of volunteers who come year after year and spend lots and lots of time helping folks. And so, we worked up a process where there was a phone number, and they would, anybody that was interested would call, get a live person, and they'd talk about how it could be done in a virtual way. Well, the director is, his name is Tim, can't recall his last name, but he sent me some statistics. He said in 2020, when we stopped on March 4th, which is early, we had over 1,000 people served. This year, we had, because of this scenario, 175 phone calls. And of those phone calls, most of it was from our publicity, our library, and the AARP local. And 118, after these phone calls, they sent out 175 emails. 118 responded, and ultimately, only 55 people, as opposed to over 1,000, which is a huge loss, were able to use the system and have their tax forms submitted. And the sad fact of the matter is that they characterized the people that did submit were young, who understood technology, weren't afraid, and were able to do it. The seniors didn't. And, you know, the question is, maybe they'll be filing, you know, two returns next year. Maybe they went to, they paid for a return. We don't know. But it was just, it just goes to prove how important this program is and how, you know, we need to continue to do it. And we appreciate the AARP volunteers, because they're really amazing. They come here at nine, and they're two days a week, and they're supposed to close at three. And they're here to five, you know. They're just an impressive group of people. So having said that, Friends Bookstore is now reopened and is selling books at a good pace. And again, small, small boxes or bags, too, a number can be made, because there's still down staff, you know, who have not returned for one reason or another. The foundation, there's a number of things to talk about, but one, one element that I'm going to ask for a vote is, the library board is, is, per the foundation charter, has to accept the foundation board members that have been appointed or reappointed. And so, last year, in May, there was, I believe, six people who were reappointed to, all for three-year terms, beginning in July of 2021. So I'm going to ask for a motion, for somebody to make a motion from the board to approve the reappointment of the following foundation board members for three-year terms. And they begin with Cheryl, Dr. Cheryl Archibald, Dr. Amy Bass, Judith Factor, Chris Sellen, and Jim Swinehart.
I think that was five, or there's six?
Oh, maybe there's five, and I got one wrong.
Okay. That's okay. Yep, I can make a motion to approve the reappointment for a new three-year term. Cheryl Archibald, Amy Bass, Judith Factor, Chris Sellen.
Chris Sellen, yeah.
Oh, and Jim Swinehart. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the motion passes, so...
Thank you.
Yep, we have approved that reappointment. Great.
Again, the foundation is still moving forward with their Scavaganza, which is citywide scavenger event on Saturday, which is October 2nd. And on October 3rd, particularly exciting, they are in the process of putting together a family fair held here at the library on Sundays from 1:00 to 5:00. You've heard all about it. The theme is reading is a superpower and things of that nature. And so, programs are going on. Rio Alcena, our team librarian, is planning a mini Comic-Con, which is pretty cool. So it's all moving forward. I have a meeting with Lynn Green next week to talk about some grant opportunities that they're seeking to be able to underwrite the presentation. And that is it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. That's great. Some good news, mostly good news, some not-so-good news. So you gave a...
Personal report?
Yeah, I want to give a personal report.
It's a long one, because we've had a lot of activity.
Sure.
And what I will do is, per the, per the law, the board needs to make a resolution and approve retirements or resignations or hires. And so, here we go. I'm asking for a resolution to approve the retirement of employee Beth Gollum. She was a senior library clerk. Her retirement is June 30th of this year. Her salary upon her retirement was $60,783. Beth worked over 35 years and did a terrific job. Another retirement, another person who was a stellar performer, worked for many years, really the best readers advisor that I've ever met. She seemingly has read every book and remembers them. Her name is Beth Ann Mills. She retired also as of June 30th this year. She was librarian three, and her salary upon retirement was $95,674. And so, I would ask for a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the retirement of Beth Gollum. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
And Beth Ann Mills. Can I do both of them together? Can I get a second?
Second.
Can I get, I'll, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, any opposed? No, the motion passes.
Okay, next are our new hires, and some names you'll be familiar with. I'm asking for a motion to approve the hiring of Michaelia, or Makella.
Michaela?
Michaela Rogers at the Huguenot Children's Library as a page for the summer period. And her start date is July 6th of this year, and her salary is $14 an hour. And we're also asking for approval to, for the hire of Beth Gollum as an hourly library clerk. First start date is July 6th, 2021, and her salary is hourly $23.65 per hour. And also, Beth Ann Mills as a librarian one, not a librarian three. She can't keep away, nor can Beth, the other Beth. Her start date is July 1st of this year, and her salary is $26.86 per hour.
That's interesting. So how does that impact their...
It doesn't impact their retirement.
Or their benefits, or anything?
There's a, depending on their age or whatever, there's a limited amount of hours you can work, or whatever.
Got it.
From 17 to 10 to 11, with no limit.
It's like they don't, they don't quite want to stop working yet.
If they don't want, for example, my father stopped. He retired at 62, he pulled work up to 17 hours per week.
Right, got it.
So if you get 65, there's no limit, but you still got to retire.
Got it. Great, okay. Then I will ask the board to approve these new hires. Michaela Rogers, Beth Gollum, and Beth Ann Mills. Can I get all in favor? Sorry, sorry. I was like, I'm missing something. Yes. Can I get a second? I made a motion. I'm going to make a motion. Let's start over.
Let's start over.
I will make a motion that the board approve these new hires. Michaela Rogers, Beth Gollum, and Beth Ann Mills. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
And one last, and then we will, and we'll be done with all the resolutions. Our, Tim Tetra, who's a librarian one, he's an hourly archivist. He is resigning. He was lucky enough to get a full-time job elsewhere. And so, his resignation is, starts as of July 12th of this year. And his salary upon the time of his departure was $29.06 per hour. And could I have a...
Yeah, sure. Well, yep, we can make a motion to approve the termination of, okay, of, what's his name?
Tim Tetra.
Tim Tetra.
Termination or resignation?
Yeah, it says...
Resignation.
It's all right, it's a, okay, it says termination. A resignation of Tim Tetra. Can I, yep, thank you. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you. And just a little bit more. This is a really heavy-duty personnel committee report. And per, yep, okay, go for it, Tom. I'll make it quick. Per previous board approval, we have now posted and the following positions. One is the assistant director position, which I have to say, it's frustrating that civil service only gives us 10 days. And it's also frustrating that they won't advertise beyond putting out a website. But we posted it in, on the director's listserv, on the Westchester Library System listserv, the Library Association listserv, on the New York State Library listserv. We are trying to connect with the broader base of people of color. So we posted on Reforma, which is a, which is a Spanish-speaking product. We also posted on Asian. We were going to post on the Black Caucus, but because we only had such a short period of time, and it was expensive, we just chose not, not to do that. But, but we are, we are just sending it around and making it available to people. Jean?
I just want, you said that they don't need to be extended. If they cannot get enough, we've not given enough, uh, fabric.
We'll find out.
I asked them to go out again for another 10 days.
So that's something, you know, but...
How long does that get extended?
Another 10 days.
Another 10 days.
So I'm just going to chime in real quick, just, I would encourage all of you, and I'm going to send it to you now via email. Social media is a wonderful thing.
Send it out.
Post it in your networks, right? That's legal, free information that is available. Encourage people that you may know within your networks or outside your networks that are eligible, successful candidates that can bring about change and assist Tom in his leadership.
Because we are, you know, we are trying to find the, the best candidates for these positions. We're also very mindful that we are a community of diversity. And so, we're always striving to, to find candidates that meet those needs. So, so I mentioned the assistant director as a full-time position. The other full-time position is the librarian two in charge of the circulation desk. And also, that person will ultimately be in charge of the first-floor information desk, too, as well. Another full-time position that we're posting is a librarian one in adult services, with, who will do all the duties that a reference librarian does. But we're specifically looking for someone with technology and database skills so that, so that they can help us market, explain, and curate the many online products that we have that we think aren't always being used as, as well as they should be. So that's that. We are also looking for a full-time library assistant, a bilingual. This is a bilingual position, very specifically. And all the other positions that we've advertised for, we have indicated that Spanish language, skill, language skills are a plus, because we, again, you know, we serve a diverse population. And we have a number of part-time positions, too, as well. In the children's room, the hourly librarian, the hourly library assistant, and the hourly library trainee. So, so those are going forward. And we have, as the hourly part-time laborer position, there is a list that exists, and our custodians are looking at candidates. They're going to give us the candidates to look at, too, as well, and then they'll start interviewing. And we're working on the programming coordinator, which is an important position. And that's a position we have to, because it didn't exist before, and we have to write from scratch. And that's it.
Wow, thank you. That was the personnel report. Good. So that brings us to committee reports. Budget Committee, I don't think we have anything to report, right? Buildings and Grounds, Sarah?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Community Relations, Daniel?
Just two things, something to report and request. I want to say congrats to Francis for his installment as the Royal Club President of Rochelle. I wasn't able to make it at the dinner I was scheduled to attend. My, my family reported a surprise from nowhere, so I was not able to attend.
Unfortunately.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's where you were. We missed you.
And one of the things as far as the community relation, my respect is if Lisa gets quit, if she can send a community relations or the chair... if she can send a community relations or the chair, a simple write-up of happenings. I know Barbara Davis used to do this, of just happenings that can go in all the trustees file. Happenings that happened during that month period, but as well as any upcoming events that may be, you know, something that we should be aware and...
And Daniel, I would also include, in addition to Lisa, who's our new marketing and communications coordinator, Denise Link, who is really everywhere in the community in terms of her position as an outreach person. So, I will, I will make sure that all that...
And that involves kind of, or lump sum, but, you know, it's, it's, aside from what we do on a regular basis, Denise is such an amazing asset to what she does. She gets, in my opinion, very little credit for the work that she does. I can tell you as a, as a nonprofit leader of how many clients she really comes across with down in LA. I mean, she's helped so many clients with this whole rental assistance program for the twelve, thirteen months initiative from unemployment to other services. So, you know, she, 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 uh, she does fantastic work. And I think that it's something that should be highlighted and at, at the board. Where, if, if any, there may be some deficits and that she needs additional assistance or resources because she is not, she's dealing with a very diverse population, a very at-risk population. So, if there's any additional training from mental health first stage to other resources that we can provide now for her, but other connections, we would like to know of how we can enhance the, the program delivery that she's doing and for the library as well.
Thank you, Daniel, Denise is really superb. And as you folks know, taking, taking a step back, when Barbara Davis retired, we knew that we had to refashion the whole situation because it was just too much for one person to do. And when we reorganized, we knew that we had a tremendous asset in Denise who was working under Barbara. And so, as part of our plan, Denise was upgraded and, and was given full responsibility in tandem with working with myself, someday with the assistant director, and with you, the board. So, you know, we have, we have acknowledged that, and she really is so open to, like so many of our staff, but in particular Denise has embraced this job with passion, you know, really believes in it and is, is, is a real asset to the library.
I gotta give her a prop. She, she was able to coordinate and facilitate from a donor to so, a youth, youth program, a YP program, as you're aware, with Judy Rice and some of my case managers, developing a book club that they're currently reading a book. I don't know if you're...
Yeah, I'm reading it.
Yeah, the title is, I can't move without it. The Sweden Tragic Life of Robert Dean.
Josh, right.
Yes, yes. And they're reading that not only the young adults, six to twenty-four, but also their mentors that they are assigned. And Denise was instrumental in making those connections through my network, through the donor. Yes, and, and she was, again, outside of her regular normal operations, but again, being that community relations department, connecting those resources to young people in need and mentors. I mean, she, she, she made it happen, and I gotta, I gotta give her a prop.
I've gotta call the group.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've got a copy.
One of the mentees and the mentor, so we picked, and we share it with our...
We can have extra copies here too, because it was...
Oh, do you?
We had the author here who would come and speak.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Good, excellent, thank you, that's it? Good, that's it.
I do wanna add something to Daniel's request. I do get requests from different nonprofits and community organizations on the library's availability. I did talk to someone previously.
As far as space, like you say...
As far as the calendar, right, so what's available, right, space.
Yeah, okay.
What's available, yeah, 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 like what's available, what's not available, what's booked, what's not booked. Because I, I did make a request a couple of times last year for three, or, no, two or three, it was a... For two or three organizations, and I'm like, oh, I think we're booked that time. So, instead of making an inquiry, we could just say, oh, all right, so if someone comes to me, I could say, yes. You know, it, it, the calendar doesn't look like there's anyone on it.
Well, we, you know, I'm actually, by happenstance, Nikki Fudge is on vacation and we have here, able to handle the camera system, is Ed Roddy. And Ed really is the person in charge of booking for physical plan. He really is excellent, he's very thorough. But, just to sort of add to, to that question, one of the things that we're doing now that we, we were opposed to in the past, let's say. And we are going to look and, and bring on board a software, room reservation system where people can see what's, what's going on. And you know what, to be honest with you, Cory, the staff need it too. Because the people, people are staying cutting it.
Yeah, but my recommendation, like my experience, Ed, he's the first person that I call and he'll tell you what's available, what's not available, we'll program. And will give you any dates that you may have in mind, also, and props for...
Ed is extremely thorough and always honestly, not just saying it because he's here today, but he gets back to you, he's on top of things. So, if, so if you, Cory, if you have anything, I would, I can send you Ed's email, or his phone number too.
Don't worry.
Good, finance committee?
Little report, I did email Jane and Tom yesterday or today. So, I did talk to a couple of people, came back to me on looking for a new banking relationship. Robert Van Der Slice, he was very engaging, called me quite a few times. Paul DeGrotto, I reached out to.
And where are these people from?
They are, Robert Van Der Slice is with Peoples Bank.
Okay.
Paul DeGrotto is with Wells Fargo. Thomas Nash is with Sterling. And Rosemary McLaughlin is with Signature. So, of all the people, these are the people I've talked to. And I've sent out information to them and come back, they have not come back to me, I've sent out information to them.
Who are we with now?
HSBC.
HSBC, got it.
Right. And we also, we had a proposal earlier, like a month ago, from other banks.
The bank chain.
It was N T. N T, yes, yeah. So, N T put in a proposal, wanted to make sure we had more than just one proposal. So, I talked to these other banks, Jean provided the information, I followed with them. And Wells Fargo, I had to pass on to their government group. I think Sterling is doing a merger with Webster, so they're gonna be Webster Bank pretty soon. We just wrote down the block, so that may be pretty cool. Rosemary McLaughlin, she's been around for a while, she knew, she managed some of the money for us for a while, yeah.
I don't think so, but I, Rosemary is a true Rochellean and spent here, she's been at Signature Bank for a long time.
Yeah, she's been, yeah. And Robert, I think he sent this request.
I know him too.
Yeah.
He's another fellow, he's a good guy.
Robert's been following up a lot, actually, he's been really good. So, yeah, so we should have it wrapped up, hopefully, you know, Jean and Tom, I'll send you over their proposals. We could all get on a call, or however you wanna do it. We get it wrapped up in the next two weeks, so we can move it along. Okay, when do we start, when do we start?
I'm starting next week, but it will take, beginning of August, September, I'd like to be back in the morning. But I find like everything then.
Okay. Do you wanna go into HSBC for the next, you wanna use HSBC through September?
I think I have to at this point. Once they start, we want to, I need the treasurer to move money, sign cards, do a lot of work to move it over. So, I don't know, Tom, I, I hear we can get him off the phone now.
Okay.
So, maybe we can share the conversation.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Good, thank you. Personnel committee? Personnel committee, we had our personnel report, I don't know if there...
Well, just that, I can sort of speak for the committee very briefly, that of course our union contract has expired and we are in the process of negotiations with the union, union team. And I believe we have a meeting set for Wednesday at 11:00 AM here in the library to continue the conversation.
Wednesday, 11:00 AM, so Sarah, Danielle, Lucille, you are the new personnel committee. So, I assume that they would all attend.
That's right, now that this has come out, plus Deirdre has...
I believe Deirdre's, yeah.
Uh, Deirdre is, is staying on as sort of as a citizens advisor. We have citizen advisors for different other, for other committees as well. So, I'm just gonna have to look and see who this, who is on.
And, and what does that mean, is it, this makes it easy for you?
I'm curious, do we, do we transition over to the new personnel committee? Or do we, I mean, who were in an additional conversation? I mean, aside from myself, it was...
Deirdre and Beth.
And Beth.
Yes, so, it's still you, so you're the continuity.
And Deirdre.
And, and Deirdre, right?
Yeah, okay.
Right, so Lucille and Sarah will get up to speed.
So, we'll get, we'll get you...
We actually have some information on, on board in, in the resources area under personnel committee.
I, yeah, I have to talk to you on board, because I tried uploading and I don't know how to do it. Didn't give me any option to do it, have you tried that too?
For Lucille, if you'd like, at some point to come in to... For us to share information about how to use that.
We don't?
It's new for us, I mean, we're...
It's pretty simple, it's modular, I mean, there's a dashboard, there's other information on there, there's not, I've signed in.
But I wondered if you had gone, you know, there are so many little pigeonholes.
Right, no, and I, I went, I didn't dive deep, I mean, I wouldn't encounter when I went to something, but I'll, if I have...
But in the, in the, in the personnel committee, there are, there is a document that Deirdre submitted, Dan, which were the notes about the negotiation and some other things that might help the committee get up to speed. But you, of course, also have Daniel and Deirdre too. And me.
Thank you, personnel committee. Next is policy committee, which was me, and I'm not on the policy committee now, but I will transition by saying we didn't meet in the last month. And the only thing that came up was related to the, what's the name of the issue that we're having? It's called the, it's like these audits, First Amendment audits.
First Amendment audit.
That people are, libraries are being kind of besieged with. And I think that will be an important task of the policy committee. And I think it's gonna be a, it will be an important discussion once the policy committee kind of tackles that. So, I will kind of pass that on and I'm gonna pay attention to the policies still.
And, and just, just because of this, I don't know if you're familiar with this scenario. There is a group of self-appointed First Amendment auditors who are coming into libraries and without any notice, and they are filming people, children, doing things and without, without asking permission, and they feel they have the right to do so. And libraries, you know, don't, and there needs to be policies in place. And oftentimes what these people are doing, I'll be honest with you, have nothing to do with First Amendment and has more to do with shock value and the possibility that the library or the police force or both will, will act in an inappropriate way, which will allow them to litigate suing us. It's really...
I think I'm more concerned though, should I be?
Yes, so that's where the policy will be very important, that we need to know and understand our legal parameters in which we can develop a policy that can kind of respond to, it's provocative. It's just meant to be provocative and there's no real civic duty here. This is all about clickbait, it's about putting things up on YouTube, it's with the hope of getting a tussle going and all of it on video, so, right? So, that's really all this is about.
I, I did reach out to our attorney, actually, and I'm reminded that he hasn't responded, so...
You, right, that's right, so, yes, yeah, we had that exchange, yes, so we'll, so we'll kind of pass that on and, and move forward.
Is game board on other libraries, or are they...
There were some, yes.
There were some libraries, and it was, you know, there was a few here locally. And then there have been a number in Connecticut, there was a really bad incident in Danbury where they surprised people, the police reacted, according to this First Amendment person, inappropriately. So, there's a lawsuit underway right now. And, you know, that's happened in Chicago and on the West Coast. So, I think, I think the solution is, our research has shown, is that we have to write a policy that protects the library and allows us to protect our patrons and their privacy. You know, without, without, you know, this chaotic situation where somebody comes in with a camera and films your child in the, in the children's area, or, you know, somebody else on a computer.
And now you're video protesting.
That has been raising our bodies, well, it's...
Oh, has it?
So, yes, it came up, even at the, at our board level, because it has affected a number of libraries.
Yeah, locally.
So, we coordinate our response, I suppose.
That's good, that's good to know, Francis.
Yeah.
Yeah, any information you can get, all of that, what the coordination is on that, and what they're saying. So, yeah, I would, I would, I would like to get this sooner than...
Yes, yes.
Then later, you know?
I think that means the policy committee should, will, will kind of forward all this information to the new policy committee and the policy committee should meet before the next board meeting if possible. And Francis, any information that you have to share would be beneficial, so we can include you on that email, Jane. Good, thank you. So, special projects committee, I presented last time, Cory, do you wanna say anything about the...
No, I missed the, the switch. I mean, I think it's going well, personally, I think it's going really well. I think the community will be very happy with what we're doing. I thought the, what do we have? We have it here, what do we have?
We had our, so, we had public works partners, we had, we had our board, kind of focus group with them, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was really well, and we did. I think it's, I'm excited about it, you know, just 'cause finally getting through it.
That's right, yeah, finally, yeah, so, good, so I will supplement what you said and, and kind of group this with the update on the strategic plan and needs assessment. Overall, we are, Lisa, our new communications and marketing person, director?
Coordinator.
Coordinator, thank you. She created a fact sheet at our request, so we asked to provide as much information about what is a strategic plan, why do we need it, why do we do it, what does it entail, what do we need from the population at large to inform the strategic plan? So, she has put something together that's really helpful and informative. We do need to fill in some blanks and answer some questions about the information we wanna make readily available to the public as they are going to be shortly starting to hear about the survey that we're putting out. In addition to the survey, as everybody knows, we're having a town hall on July 27th, so please mark your calendars, that's, had been proposed for, I think, six to eight. We're gonna ask what they do like six thirty, seven, I'm sorry, seven to eight thirty, to shorten it and to start later. It's in-person, and we're looking at like the wonderful problem we hope to have, that we have too many people who wanna come, and where do we put them, and can we... Right? We can hope and dream, but in, in the absence of a town hall, you know, attendee, we, you know, there will be other opportunities to fill out the survey, all of us should fill out the survey in addition to having, you know, provided input during our focus group. So, we're kind of trying to coordinate and align the staff effort of the fact sheets and the kind of campaign of education with the announcement of the town hall and the survey and everything else.
The survey is in Spanish as well as English.
Which is great, and we wanna have as much distribution as widely as possible and as many formats as possible. What's that?
We schedule with them for Monday.
Perfect, good. So, I think that we have an ad hoc committee, which is Cory, Sarah, and I, which is our strategic planning committee. And we worked, we kind of did that because a lot of what we're working on is related to the building and the, the physical plant. And so, Sarah's knowledge is really helpful for that. So, the three of us and Tom are guiding public works partners, we meet with them every other week. And it's been, you know, I think it's been going well. It's, it's kind of on a fast track, it's a sixteen-week engagement and we're, what, four weeks in already now, so, at least. And that's all I have. Is there any public to be heard tonight, does it seem like it?
Nope.
Nope. Then, does anyone else have anything to say, comments? Crickets, good.
I enjoyed your comment at the last public works.
I enjoyed your comment last, at the, uh, last public board meeting, your point of view on the building.
I don't remember exactly what it was, but.
It was good, just, you know, it was, um.
Yeah, yeah.
You said it smartly, whatever it was.
Right, it was just like, it was like, in the turnip point of view, right, the way you saw what a library is, so, yeah.
She knows, she knows well, she knows well. Good, thank you, then I would like to make a motion to adjourn, can I get a?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, any opposed? No, the meeting is adjourned, I'm gonna use the gavel, there we go. Such power.
You did it like a pro.
Yeah, you're a pro.